Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded and shown on TV, so please silence your devices. Do we have any public comment to start the meeting? Okay, seeing none, we will have our student report. I don't see, I don't know if Caitlin and Jack are here, actually. All right, we'll get to them when they come in. We'll move on to our consent agenda.
So, Madam Chair, I move to accept the minutes from the April 11th, 2019 meeting as presented in the packet.
Motion made by Ms. Mably, second by Mr. Trizzi. Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
Mr. McDevitt?
I will abstain.
Okay. Ms. Picard?
I will abstain.
Ms. Mably?
Aye.
And aye. So, three no with two absentees, absensions. All right, superintendents' report.
An exciting one for tonight. We have a couple folks here. First and foremost, we have some new hires here for the start of the next school year. And if I could have Dr. Tiffany Gaudin come up and Ms. Marcy Bakusi, if you guys just want to have a seat, and I'll talk about each of you briefly.
This is in front of your backs.
Yes. So, we're thrilled. We had some really competitive processes to hire for the new Anne Bradstreet Early Childhood Center principal that will be working as the campus principal and working very closely with Mary Lou Connors, as well as a new Director of Special Education, Marcy Bakusi. Dr. Gaudin has been principal and head of school in Lawrence for well over a decade now. It was a really tremendous field of candidates. She has her doctorate from Boston University, a master's from Salem State, and she went to St. Mike's for her undergrad. She has extensive experience with English language learners. I think she even taught as an EL.
Marshall Islands.
Marshall Islands, yes. And we're just thrilled to have her. So, anything you'd like to say? We really welcome you here to the Bradstreet.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited to be joining North Andover Schools, and I've had such a wonderful, warm welcome. So many people have reached out already via email and said, "Thank you." You know, "You're welcome," and I'm just really looking forward to getting started July 1st. So, thank you.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have here the newly hired Director of Special Education. As many of you know, we have restructured from the position of Assistant Superintendent for Student Services to the district-wide Director of Special Education. Many of you may know from the announcement that I sent out before break that Dr. Straight is becoming the head of a collaborative down on the South Shore, and we're really thrilled for her. Congratulations on that. I know that that was becoming the head of a collaboratives like being the superintendent of a district. So, we're really proud of Dr. Straight, and we're thrilled to... Someone have a reintroduction. This is Marcy Bakusi. For the last two years, she's been the Special Education Administrator at Wakefield High School. Prior to that, she worked here in North Andover as the coordinator or director of out-of-district placement, as well as served as evaluation team leader. She has extensive special education experience in collaboratives, as well as in New Report, Danvers, and a few other places. And additionally, and really important particularly to me, is she has not only a tremendous background in special education, but in 504s as well. And that really came through in the component of that, and we are thrilled to have her. I know that the principal in Wakefield is a North Andover resident, and she was not as thrilled for us to steal her, but happy for Marcy. And the Director of Special Education in Wakefield is also a North Andover resident. And she was sad to see her go as well, but really thrilled for Marcy. So, I'm really excited for these two to join us. I really think special things are in place, you know, not only for the district, but particularly at that new school, the Bradstreet, and in special education and all the components that go with it here in North Andover. And I'm really thrilled you're on board. Anything you'd like to say, Marcy?
Oh, I'm thrilled to be back and excited to work for the families here and be part of a team that I'm excited to be back with.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Is it not Wakefield that had the beyond-the-classroom days?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a, you have some experience of that.
Sure.
Hopefully, we never have a snow day again, but...
You sound disappointed by that.
Well, we didn't have any experiences with those this year.
No, we really didn't this year, but...
Good experiences.
We're saving projects now for next year.
Yes. Well, we're working, it's something we'll actually be working on this summer. All right, so like we tell the student reps, you're more than welcome to stay around, but I'm sure both of you have planning to do for work tomorrow, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just a couple other components. Someone felt it was really important to get this to me today, and I know if Karen Klein is out there, she'd be just thrilled. But there's a grandparent from the Bradstreet School who lives in Aruba, and she was reading the paper from Aruba today, and she just couldn't believe that they were in Aruba writing about the search for Anne Bradstreet.
Oh, yeah.
You know, where her, you know, grandchildren go to school. So, they sent this over and asked if I'd mention it tonight. And last but not least, I have Ms. Marks is going to give an update on the meeting we held right before break with some real key players to talk about our plan going forward in a meaningful way, as it's an issue everywhere on vaping, so.
So, is Dr. Gilligan saying? We did have a meeting just before break, and both of our secondary principals were in attendance, Dr. Gilligan and myself, our Director of Nursing, Cheryl Barzac.
Excuse me, I can't hear you. Could you speak louder?
Yeah, I can try. So, do you want me to repeat what I've already said?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, the committee did meet prior to vacation, the break, and on the committee were both of our secondary school principals. Cheryl Barzac, our Director of Nursing, Chief of Police Chuck Gray, Dr. Gilligan and myself, and Dr. McMillan, who is the Board of Health, the doctor for the Board of Health for the town. And we really focused on concerns that people brought up, and particularly the need for educating our students, in particular, starting at even younger ages, kind of like what happened with smoking, trying to get kids at a younger age to recognize the dangers of that addiction. So, we talked a lot about that, and also parent education. So, the nurses and the police department will be attending a conference at the District Attorney's Office in May, and vaping is one of the topics that's going to be discussed there. And it is a problem across the North Shore, which is why that is happening at the District Attorney's Conference. Cheryl Barzac has also written a grant, and prior to vacation, all of our ninth-grade students went to the Museum of Science for a vaping exhibit, which the feedback we got was that it was very informative and very educational. And the committee will be meeting again, and we will continue to pursue next steps. Thank you.
And that's if, that's if...
Madam Chair? It says on our agenda that we have to do the confirmation of the...
That's inaccurate.
Okay.
We don't vote on that.
Okay, thank you.
So, can I actually just go back? Are there, is the committee making any recommendations or modifications of consequences for students who are getting caught vaping in school, on school grounds?
There may be.
When will we see that potentially?
Right. So, what we're doing is really gathering all that information. We're hoping there's going to be some good information that comes out of the DA's conference because they're going to be sharing what other districts are doing and taking a look at what those practices are, what our practices are, and there may be changes from that.
Okay, great.
So, that was a big topic of the discussion, particularly around the consequences, because as you remember, the consequences were upped by talking to the health expert, the Chief of Police. You know, there's going to be a component of education to that or coursework, possibly in lieu of or a part of that suspension.
Any comments?
Okay. For the Chair's report, I am going to start with our Vice Chair. You have the Hall of Fame nomination.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. So, the Educator Hall of Fame nominations are open. They opened on April 1st, and nominations are welcome up until June 30th. And if people are remembering that this is an award that's been in place for about 10 or 12 years? 12.
I was going to say about 10.
Yeah. For a former teacher or, we added a couple years ago, administrator from the district from years of service and gets nominated from other colleagues or former colleagues, people in the community, family members, et cetera. And nominations, once there's application online and information there, and once the nominations are gathered, we'll put together a committee and make recommendations for who will be the recipient in the fall. And it has been our practice the last couple of years to celebrate that winner along with the teachers who achieve professional teacher status at a ceremony at the library in October. Assuming we're going to keep it that way. So, that is open, and we encourage nominations. I believe that some have already started to come in, so that's great.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, you get the nominations we sent?
I don't get them, so they go to Ms. Zegary, and then at June 30th, then I get them. So, she just told me that she started to get some activity, so.
If I remember correctly, I think one or two years ago, we established basically that it would be a committee.
Yes, exactly.
So, who are you, are you picking that committee? Is that already picked?
It's not picked yet.
Okay. Because I remember one was like Union Representative.
There's a criteria online of, I think there's current staff, there's community member, things like that.
Okay.
I haven't gotten that far yet, so...
Okay, all right.
But yes, there will be.
Okay, because I think this may be the first year we actually are utilizing the committee. Is that correct?
We did not need to last year.
Or the year before.
Correct, okay.
So, everything goes to Ms. Zegary?
Correct.
Since for years I felt like I went to Mr. McDevitt.
Well, last year, an online application was added. So, it used to be you had to send something in and printed writing in an envelope, et cetera. Now, you can apply online and add some extra information.
If I recall correctly, we did say that we could have more than one person recognized. Is that right?
Um, I think...
We can look. We should check, but I think we did vote last fall that we could have more than one person receive the award.
I think it said maximum two, we came up with.
Mm-hmm.
Again, we haven't had that occasion so far. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the lead on that. Town manager search committee update. I don't have a whole lot to report since the last school committee meeting. We've met once. That was last night. So, we're continuing to discuss the criteria which the committee feels would be beneficial in a town manager. So, you know, just examples like experience in negotiations, things like that. So, we're still coming up with that. I can tell you there's a week left in the application process, and we've received 26 applications so far, some from out of state. And we reviewed the timeline, and we're still on track to do interviews June 20th with the Board of Selectmen, doing the finalists June 24th. Now, an update on the fundraising practices subcommittee.
Sure, I'll take just a couple of quick minutes. So, we've met three times now. We have not scheduled our next meeting, partially because of my travel schedule. But what we've been doing, and it's been great, Mr. Jackson and Mr. Merely have been really instrumental in trying to compile some of the data from the student accounts so that we can better understand how much money some of our athletic teams and activities and clubs are actually fundraising within, in the district, really primarily at the high school, although there are some at the middle school as well, and then really diving into what they are spending the money on. And I think we found a good number of things are really going to, things like equipment, but there are coaches and assistant coaches, not head coaches, but assistant coaches for some of our sport teams, not necessarily at some of the club levels. And so, we're really trying to figure out exactly how much of that is really kind of coming in, and that's a little bit difficult to gather from some of the records that are there and just kind of seeing how that is all kind of handled. And then I think we start in the fall, I think, with teacher negotiations. And so, I think this will be, we're hoping to kind of wrap up prior to then, so if we need to add positions into the contract to be sure that assistant coaches are being compensated for things like in the retirement calculations for coaching positions, that we will have those, that data included in there as a potential possibility. And then I think, you know, from the equipment perspective, you know, are there things that we are lacking that we need to kind of reprioritize for that? So, some of those things I think will be coming out, as well as how they're actually fundraising as well. So, there's a number of different means that the students are using, and so we need to kind of, again, review the policies for that and continue to find the information. So, Mr. Merely, anything you want to add?
Oh, that covers it.
That covers it? Okay.
Do you look at the equity or ability to fundraise between the different genders?
We have not gotten into that yet. That's a good point. I'll make a note of that. But we haven't, we have all the data. I don't know, what we actually would probably have to do is look at the number of participants, for example, between, I'll just make this up, a boy soccer team and a girl soccer team, you know, from varsity all the way down to freshman, and then, you know, do some division there to figure out averages, so.
And you also are looking at the non, like the more parent-driven fundraising entities or not?
We are looking at what is actually contributing to the activities within the high school. So, some of them we know are student kind of focused, and then we also have things like boosters who help, and what are they doing, right? And so, you know, just really kind of understanding that.
And this is not just athletics, right? This is any activity?
It's any activity that's fundraising, yep.
And I think you said this, but let me clarify, some of the fundraising goes to salaries?
Some of that is actually going to like assistant coaches in terms of stipends, and they are not in the contract.
Does the money get transferred to the school department, and then they get paid out of that, or are they just getting?
From the student activity account. Money goes in there and goes out of there. It doesn't go into our general fund.
But we're pulling taxes and all that stuff, no?
No, that's part of the problem.
Right.
It's that, and it's the not getting credit for retirement for those who are doing it.
Sure.
Because the Massachusetts retirement is specifically off of what's in the contract, if I understand the law.
It's kind of like Project Scope creep in that we had done, we had kind of cleaned it up a few years ago, and then teams, as they get bigger, they decide they want to have some more help, and it starts all this volunteer, and then people think, "Oh, you're putting all that time in, you should get compensated for it." And then before you know it, you have an assistant coach, and it's not in the contract.
Is the goal to make recommendations on that?
We will make recommendations on that. Whether or not that actually goes into the contract or not will depend upon negotiations. But I think the number of assistants that we are finding that students are fundraising for is larger than we anticipated. So, that's very concerning.
And the technology changes. So, just when we, a couple years ago, you did some work around...
Just last year.
Just last year. And the traditional people going, knocking on a door and selling a calendar, you know, has now turned to email addresses and, you know, virtual connections, so.
Yeah, pretty much just donate money without having to sell something, basically, almost like GoFundMe, which actually is in violation of our policies. We don't have teachers do that for supplies for classroom, for example, and then we have our athletics and our activities that are doing the same, so.
Andrew, I want to thank you because you actually took the lead on this, and you brought it to our attention and said, "This is something we really need to look at," and then you volunteered to chair this committee, and it's very important work. It's, I think this is, I think you're going to uncover a lot of stuff, so.
That's right.
I really want to thank you for taking the lead on that.
I have to ask to clarify. You said it's against our policy to have GoFundMe or crowdsourcing, but my recollection of that vote was that it had to be approved by the principal and the superintendent. It's not against the policy, it's just needs to be approved at higher levels. So, double-check that. I could be wrong.
You're correct.
Okay.
Any, I, actually, I believe any fundraising activity needs to be approved by the building principal and the superintendent if there's a disagreement, I would assume. But that, I'm pretty sure our policy says that we are not encouraging crowdfunding, GoFundMe pages, et cetera. I'll double-check that again.
Look at what it says.
Yep.
I remember that was a struggle.
Will do.
Thanks.
And now, I'd like to, I might need your help on this, Helen. I wanted to announce that there's a poetry event tomorrow night, and I had the link that you sent me up, and now technology is failing, and it's not coming up.
So, now we're going to have to use our brains?
Yes. It's six o'clock, and there's going to be some Atkinson and Franklin students.
Franklin, I think it's Atkinson and Franklin students are going to do step poetry. You probably know better than we do. And we have, did we have a poet? Oh, we have, we have the librarian out there. Do you?
We do.
If anybody knows more than we do, but step poetry from the students, there'll be an opportunity for citizens and anybody who comes of any age to share their own, a short piece of their own poetry or someone else's poetry, and the focus is on nature.
And there's going to be some poetry read in Old English, I guess?
Yeah, our poet laureate has some Old English poetry, and our former poet laureate are the hosts of this event, so it should be pretty fun. Good thing to do on a rainy Friday night.
You sit at the library?
It's at the Stevens Estate.
Yep, six o'clock.
And Ms. Marks, have we had a meeting since they had the poetry jam at North Andover High School?
No.
Do you want to just chime in on that as well?
So, we had a poetry jam at the high school. It was a Friday before the break, and we've, it was in existence since before I have been here, but it has grown the last couple of years. This was the best year that I've seen. So, we had students, we had the poet laureates, both our former and our current poet laureates were there. They talked about poetry, they read some of their own poetry, they read poems that they liked. We had students who wrote poems and read them. Laura Harrington, who always helps co-host us at the high school library, had a bookshelf full of poetry books, so if students wanted to grab a book and choose a poem, they could do so. Dr. Gilligan read a poem, I read a poem, so it was really fun. We have a cake, so, and kids come in and support their friends or their peers who are either going to read something of their own or choose a poem to read. Oftentimes, we have some musicians. During the time I was there this year, I didn't see any musicians. I don't know whether they actually had any this year, but we have in the past. So, it's a fun time, and it's been really fun to see it grow. So, and we have our elementary school poetry contest going on now. Tomorrow's the last date for entries, and then we will be making a ebook, which we will put up on the TV in the front of the, in central office, but most of the schools will run it on their TVs as well. And we have winners, and they get special books as well, so K through 2 and 3 through 5 levels.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, and I don't want to leave out the middle school. So, the middle school got, kind of joined the bandwagon again last year, and they did some blackout poetry and some spine poetry, which they exhibited at Stevens Memorial Library, and they're doing the same thing again this year. So, all of our grade levels now are involved in poetry for April.
Oh, that's excellent. Yeah, thank you. I see Caitlin Parks in the audience, so I'm actually going to take this opportunity and ad lib here and call her up to talk about, I know you've been meeting with legislators, so if you would give us an update on that, that'd be excellent. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Thank you. I know I was here a few weeks ago to talk about the History Lab, but I'm Caitlin Parks. I'm a senior at the high school. A few weeks ago, I was planning a meeting with Senator DeZoglio and State Representatives Minakuchi and Nguyen, and we invited a few other high school students to come as well, some of whom I see are here, which is great. And before the meeting, I did quite a bit of research to try to see what might be the best next step going forward to try to implement a dating violence policy at the high school. And I found that Melrose Public Schools has a 48-page plan that includes a policy and also a guide for teachers, administrators, parents, and students on, you know, best steps to take if they see some of these things starting to happen, and, you know, how to prevent it and also what to do if it happens. So, it's 48 pages, so I decided to save some trees. So, I just printed out the link and the title, so if you just like Google it, it'll come right up if you want to.
Hash goes around.
Yeah. So, you know, I don't think that anyone has had the chance to take a look at it yet, but just as we move forward, I thought this would be a good first step, and everyone at that meeting seemed to agree. So, if everyone just wants to take a look at it and see what might be useful, then that would be wonderful.
Anything else come out of the meetings?
We pretty much just discussed this, you know, just like, yeah, just like going forward, seeing what might be the best policy, and the legislators were all super eager to help out, and, which is wonderful, we have great legislators here in North Andover. So, they were all super interested and excited. They wanted to do whatever they could to help as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to old business, we have received the report from our independent review, and I'm going to take a few minutes now and just summarize the findings. This was linked to our agenda this morning, so some of you may have had a chance to read it, but in case you haven't, I'm going to just briefly tell you what's in it. It starts, it starts with factual summaries of three students, names redacted, and specific dates redacted, and the results of those investigations. It then goes into the legal standards and how Title IX works in the schools, and then the laws around discipline, specifically 37H, 37H and a half, and 37H and three-quarters. And then subsection D of that is the law regarding discipline off-campus. It's important to note that this is, this is law. We can't, we can't violate it, but the school committee has not adopted this statutory provision, so it seems like a formality that may be something we want to consider. Then it describes the high school policies, which have been adopted by the school committee in the handbook. And then it goes into findings and conclusions, and Attorney Sankey said that appropriate, necessary and appropriate policies regarding discipline and harassment were followed and implemented by the district. The district properly applied applicable school discipline policies in response to the three allegations made by the students, but that the practice of issuing safety plans which restrict a victim's communications and movements within the school, subjecting them to imposition of discipline for a violation of the plan, is inappropriate, and he recommends discontinuing those. So, that's pretty much it. It's a lot longer than I just read, but I was summarizing it in the interest of time, and I actually would like Dr. Gilligan to comment and share how we're going to share this with the public.
Yeah, we certainly can post it online at northandoverpublicschools.com. The primary concern raised by Attorney Sankey related to the use of those safety plans that were construed as restricting the rights and activities of the complainants of students who may have been subjected to sexual assault or harassment. In response to these findings, we will develop appropriate support forms and procedures relative to any supports for students that report being subjected to sexual assault and/or harassment that will be strictly voluntary and will not impose disciplinary action. We'll also arrange to use our current attorney for the district to help with this, who previously served as an enforcement attorney for the United States Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights, to consult with our leadership team to review and approve any revised documents that are developed. And I think most importantly, you know, the voice of our students have played a big role in raising awareness, talking about prevention and education here in this community. Moving forward, we're developing community partnerships. A new coalition just met today, made up of students, parents on it, community members. It's a school-based activity, a group that meets, and their main focus is to how do we raise awareness, prevention, education? How do we make recommendations or have ideas around enhancing our curriculum at school beyond just the life skills and health classes? The student representatives from, I think, just about every grade level. We have parents, staff, community members, such as Rick Gorman, Deanna Cruz, our community support person. The group is chaired by Steve Nugent, the Director of Guidance at High School, and Nikki Murphy, our Director of Social Emotional Learning. Ms. Picard is on there as a community member from the school committee, as well as, we're partnered with the YWCA and some different folks. So, you know, I'm really proud of those efforts. I think that student voice matters, and talking to a few of the students after the meeting today was really inspiring because they have some really tremendous ideas, particularly around... around prevention and education. The most important thing we can do is arm our students with the skills and the awareness and the strategies to navigate a world, not only at school, outside of school, and all over. And I'm really proud of the work of the coalition, particularly from the students who participated today and will continue to participate. And last but not least, we have an educational night for all community members on Healthy Relationships, Sexual Assault Awareness, and that will be May sixteenth. That's gonna be at North Endover High School from six-thirty to seven-thirty. The YWCA is sponsoring that in their outreach program that they do on awareness and education locally and not with us, so. That's what I want to say.
Okay. Committee just received this report last night, so I would ask, we haven't had a chance to discuss it, is there anything anybody wants to say or comment on?
So I think one of the things, obviously the safety plans were, you know, kind of the, the big thing that, and those were immediately, I shouldn't say immediately, those were rescinded, or, or what's the right word for them?
Were withdrawn.
Were withdrawn on March twenty-eighth for any student that had complained. For any student who had a complaint, okay. And so going forward, there are no new ones that have been established, correct?
Not in this particular, in an incident somewhat to this.
Okay.
You just said they were taken away for sexual harassment?
Yes.
Just that, but they're used for other occasions?
Yeah, what instances would they be used for?
They've been taken away in the sense of anyone that's complained of sexual harassment and/or assault, they will not be used until, reforms are developed and approved by council.
So can you give me an example of when one would be used?
They, we won't be using any safety form for anyone who would complain.
No, you said not sexual assault, right? When would one be used?
Oh, yeah, then maybe, you know, you may need to have a no contact or stay away if two kids had an issue at lunch, you know, something around that nature.
Okay. All right.
Would the goal be to have something in place for the fall?
Or sooner.
Or sooner, yeah.
We don't want anything that's, you know, appears to be restrictive or punitive for anyone, particularly, you know, who has any reports of assault or harassment.
I would just add that the, the committee that met today was about eighteen people. There were about eight students at the table. It was very positive. People had a lot of good ideas, and the, the group will be meeting again in about a month before the end of school. So I think that we're, we're looking at some long-term things. It's not something that's gonna be like a get in, do a quick fix and get out. It's gonna be a long-term conversation about how, it's really about culture change, isn't it?
So can I ask, are there any boys on the committee as well?
There are.
Good. Yep, student, student boys and adult men.
Correct.
Excellent, thank you.
And I know that last meeting, we talked about Amy had pulled all the policies, and we're going to start to review those with town council.
I'm assuming that she's been sent this, or I'll second forward it to her, but she's, I'm assuming she received it. Thank you.
So as soon as we start to receive those back from town council, we'll look at them as a committee.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm, she'll, I've looked for, I've found as many as I identify, but she'll look for others as well. So, good.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just really, I really appreciate the steps that Dr. Gilligan took right away, that we were able to support of having the independent council come in and look at this. I think that was really important to do and very helpful.
Thank you. Attorney Sankey typically represents on the parent-student side as a civil rights attorney. And early on, if there's an issue, let's confront it head-on, find out what it is, shine a light on it, and make the changes necessary for the community and what's best for our kids.
All right. The school year nineteen budget status reports.
So this is the time of year where we start to close LPOs and, and move the funds that are in any other accounts into one account so that we have a, better handle on how much we're gonna have left for the year. And what we have the principals do is just send in their requests for purchases that they need for this year to get them through the year, and then we'll move the funds back into that account so they can make that purchase. And so it really hasn't, our projection hasn't changed since the last time. You can see, we're still about a percent ahead of our spending, and when you look at the fact that we're forty-eight point seven million dollar budget, that's just below five hundred thousand dollars. And that's why we are tapping into the, or requesting from the stabilization fund, two hundred fifty thousand, and projecting a two hundred thousand dollar deficit that the town, we've been communicating this, Gillian and I have, with Andrew Mailer before we left and Lynn Savage since then, since early November. So they're well aware of it and have things in place to cover it. But yeah, it hasn't changed since the last few times we've done the report.
Well, like you said, at the, on the cover page, it seems to mostly be the startup costs.
I was just gonna say that as a reminder to anybody or to those who haven't heard this yet, it's the two main factors are the unanticipated district expenses, because we added those special education programs, and the startup of the new school.
You can see that just from the averages are much higher there.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
New business presentation, North Andover Reads.
That's going to be Assistant Superintendent Lorene Marks and...
With some other guests.
With some, with Ms. Parks, and I believe the Director of the Stevens Memorial Library is here, Ms. Kathleen Keenan.
Ms. Lynch, Caitlin just said she got the students' report emailed to her on her phone. Is she able to?
Yes. Why don't we do that right now?
Okay. Caitlin and Jack said they didn't see it on the calendar, so they didn't know that they're supposed to come today. So Caitlin just messaged me, so I will give an abbreviated version of the student report.
Wait, were they watching us at home and realized?
No, I texted and asked if they were gonna come. Um, so, um, the first thing is that currently the robotics competition is going on in Louisville, Kentucky. I don't have the exact number, but I know quite a few North Andover teams are competing, and I'm assuming that they're doing well because they always do well. Next is that today was the NEMASK Conference, which is the Northeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. So myself and the rest of North Andover Student Council attended. North Andover hosted the Fall Conference. This was the Spring Conference. It was held in North Reading. It was also Caitlin Dolly's last day as Secretary of NEMASK, and North Andover sophomore Mika Pelletier was elected Vice President of NEMASK for next year, which was super exciting. So that was a great conference. I think everyone loved it, and we took quite a few things away from it that we're gonna implement into Do Be Nice Week, which is coming up in two weeks. It starts May thirteenth. So we're gonna try to do that again, just like we did last year, and expand on it again. And lastly, the R-word campaign is coming up again. I believe that's next week. Senior Bella Fang runs that, and that is just a positive campaign, spreading not to use the R-word, and it goes on for a week, and I know they have quite a few things in store for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin, Caitlin.
Yes.
Okay, so just to introduce our guest, you did meet Caitlin. Caitlin is a senior at North Andover High School, and she's part of the Race Amity Club, which is tied into North Andover Reads this year. And then Kathleen Keenan is the Director of Stevens Memorial Library, and it is a co-project, North Andover Reads, with the North Andover School District and Stevens Memorial Library, which we started in two thousand and sixteen. So in the fall of two thousand and sixteen, we brought Jacqueline Woodson here, and we had one author, one community reads, and numerous events around town. Last year, it was Massachusetts Stories, and we had events around town as well, and books that students read within each grade level. So Jacqueline Woodson was a biggie. That was our kickoff. We had to raise a lot of money for that. We knew that we'd, we're kinda have to ebb and flow a little with the years, and just in terms of financially what we're gonna be able to do. This year coming up, typically North Andover Reads is in the fall, but with the gas explosions here in North Andover last year, it was not a conducive time to do an event like this. So it actually works out well because our second annual Race Amity Day will be in June, so we're doing the America's Other Tradition, Race Amity is our theme this year. We will go from May until June and culminate with Race Amity Day on June ninth. So we do have a website that people can refer to, and that's what that slide shows. We also have a couple of brochures that will be available in the schools, in the library, and also they are connected onto the North Andover Reads website. And that gives some titles of books that we're recommending at the high school. They are doing some book groups in conjunction with Stevens Memorial Library during lunchtime. They are currently going to be reading, You Bring the Distance Near, which they will also be doing a podcast about, which I'll talk about in a minute. We have middle school, next slide, middle school and elementary books as well that we're recommending. So all of our students, in grades three through five, have been introduced to the Wish Tree. I don't know if anyone's read this yet. It's really a beautiful, beautiful book. It has a lot of science in it as well, a really great message. When I read it, I thought even high schoolers could read this and, and gain some great insights from it. And I'll show you another activity we're doing with that. So some of the students have already begun to read this. I was in a classroom, a third-grade classroom with Dr. Gilligan, and as we were walking out, one of the kids whispered to the teacher, and the teacher called me back in and said, is that the lady who wants us to, who wanted us to read the Wish Tree? So they had already read the whole book in the class. So it's great to get some feedback from the kids. They loved it, as did the adults in, in the room. Our younger students are kindergarten through second grade. It's actually a Jacqueline Woodson book, a new book called The Day You Begin. So again, just about acceptance and friendship. So it's a great story, and the librarians are also introducing that at all of those grades. We have some middle school books as well, and we're looking at running some middle school book groups, and the library is working with us on that too, doing some groups at Stevens. So and then there are a number of other titles, picture books and chapter books for all the grade levels if students are interested. And we also have some adult books with, with the project that Kathleen will talk about. This is another whole connected reading list and where you can find books at the library, so those are all there. Part of our Race Amity Club is going to do, host on May twenty-second, which is one of our early release days, at one fifteen in the high school library, a World Cafe. I have never attended a World Cafe, but basically you have a topic that you discuss, and, and people move from table to table. There's a facilitator at each table, and you listen, you contribute, you comment, you may draw, and then at the end, you kind of come together and share your ideas. So they are going to do that on identity focused on similarities among races. So they may use some video clips, they may use some brief articles, so the kids are working on that, and I'm excited to attend and see how that all goes this time, so. I mentioned the podcast, so that is actually gonna be happening at the Youth Center, so we've brought the Youth Center into the project as well. And we have some of our students that are going to go over from the Race Amity Club, as well as our librarian from the high school. And I don't, is, is anyone gonna go from Stevens? Okay, so again, working together in conjunction with the public library as well, so that'll be a really cool podcast about the book that the high school students are reading, You Bring the Distance Near, as well as the Race Amity Day, that whole festival.
Has anyone been following the podcast Rick Gorman's been putting out?
Some of them, yeah.
Yeah.
But they are, they're good.
Yeah, they're pretty good. It's called Youth Centered.
That's great.
All right. And each elementary school, all the grades, including the Anne Bradstreet School, so the pre-K and kindergarten grades, the art teachers and the librarians are working in conjunction with the classroom teachers based on the Wish Tree book, and they are creating Wish Trees at all of the schools. So one of the art teachers sent this to me a couple of weeks ago. They had started to build their Wish Tree, and I had some more pictures from another art teacher today, but I didn't have a chance to get the, the pictures up here with this. But so all of those pieces of cloth that are wrapped around a rope are going up in the trees, and they all have wishes on them. So some of the ones I looked at today, some, some of the ones are, you know, typical things you might see with kids, like I wish I had a dog, or I wish I had no homework. But there were things like I wish no one got cancer. There were, you know, some pretty, pretty, you know, deep things too for kids. So I invite you to visit those trees across the, across the district, so it's gonna be really cool. Excited to do that. And it was really fun to kind of bring the specialists in, the art teacher, art teachers and librarians into the project like that. I will let you talk a little bit about what's happening at Stevens.
Well, first off, I really appreciate the opportunity to work as closely as we do with the school district. It's been an amazing three years. Obviously librarians love to talk about books and love to think that people wanna read books. It's especially a good partnership for us with the schools, and it's been at all levels. It's been through all of the disciplines, so we have art teachers who are working with us, we have, as well as the English teachers. So it's not just the groups that you think would automatically be doing it. Part of what we always try to do at the library is to get people engaged. Not everybody automatically thinks they wanna read, and so part of this is to have activities that will engage people, and maybe they discover there's something they wanna read, maybe they discover there's something they wanna talk about, or there's something they'd like to hear somebody else talk about. The, the idea always is engagement. And for us, and you look at amity, which is an Old English word that doesn't get used, I think, very much, we're trying to actually bring it back into use because it's talking about friendship amongst people, amongst groups, amongst organizations. It's about that sense of community, which in the library, one of the comments I hear most often is, I wish I had a better sense of community. I wish I felt I knew my neighbors. So the role that the library can play in working with the schools is to have activities that are outside of the school day, that maybe bring in people who, for whatever reason, aren't engaged through the schools. Either don't have children there, or they're working at times that don't allow it. So we've looked for a few different things. This is a lower key. We've done really a lot more in terms of what I'll call passive activities this time, just because we rolled it forward about six months from when we were supposed to do it. The next race, well, the next North Andover Reads will be in the fall, and we're hoping to go back more to some of the things we did like with Jacqueline Woodson. We'll have more time to plan, and we won't be being visited by Columbia Gas. Not everybody knows, but the library was one of the buildings that was without Columbia Gas's service for fifty-nine days. We only closed the days we had no electricity. Otherwise, we were able to bring in a construction heating unit, and we pumped heat in through the windows and kept all our activities going, except for North Andover Reads. We kind of thought that was pushing it, just 'cause people might not be able to come. So again, thank you for the opportunity. I hope you reach out to the books. The books are available online, so if you're not using the overdrive applications, call the library, find out how to do it. You can honestly get your books without even showing up at the library anymore.
So there's, if you can just go back to that slide, just there's a list of activities. Those will be all up on the website as well. There's movies, there's storytimes, there's book groups. If anyone has not seen the movie that came out this winter, The Green Book, that is one that will be showing, and it's an excellent movie. I highly recommend it, so.
Ms. Marks, Race Amity Day is always the same in the Commonwealth.
Yes.
And that's, if you go, could we go back one, Mr. Mealy? And that, it says June ninth. Do we have a time on that?
Well, we were doing ten to twelve, but, right, but today the club decided that they were feeling a little more ambitious, and I think we may extend those hours. So we have a lot of activities planned. I think it's, it's looking really good. So, so today, we'll publicize that, but it may go longer, so.
Yeah, it was a pretty remarkable event last year.
Yeah, it was fun. We had no idea really how it was gonna turn out, and we were all very pleased, so. Yeah. So, and we have some of the same types of things this year and some new things coming back. And last year, Caitlin was one of the students that went before the Board of Selectmen, and we were able to have Race Amity Day proclaimed as, as a day here in North Andover in perpetuity, and it will always be the second Sunday in June. So we hope to continue this. Caitlin can maybe talk a little bit more about this, 'cause I know your sister's involved about, with the, the ADL group at the middle school, but we have invited them to join us. We're going to be going to one of their meetings in June, so our students from the Race Amity Club are gonna be going down to the middle school, and we're hoping that some of those eighth graders will then, as ninth graders, join our club and help to continue to build all of this. So it'll be a nice connection.
I think that club went to an event today as well, didn't they? Or this last few days?
They went to a conference, I forget when it was, but recently. Yeah, my, my sister went, and she absolutely loved it, and was a little, like, was surprised at how big it actually was. It was sponsored by like the Patriots and the Red Sox, like all the major Boston sports teams. So that was really exciting to see, that it was like on such a large scale. She said there were students from Hyannis that came all the way up to Boston, so from all over the state, which was really cool. And she absolutely loved it, said she took a lot from it, and hopes to continue next year. She's in seventh grade now.
That's great.
And Caitlin will talk a little bit now, if you wanna change the slide. Thank you. Sorry. Trying to get to that slide.
She's trying to get to that slide.
Sorry, Mr. Mealy.
She's going to talk a little bit about the club, the mission, and a little bit about Race Amity Day.
So, it took the club quite a while to come up with our one-sentence mission statement, but basically, our goal is to celebrate cultural diversity and promote awareness in the community. Race Amity Day is on June 9th, as we said, hopefully from 10 to 2, but don't quote me on that. It'll be at the high school, again, in the cafeteria, and if weather permits, in the courtyard as well. We are super excited. We're going to be doing quite a few of the same things that we did last year that were successful, like the fashion show, and the dance team is going to perform. And one of my main goals this year was to make it a more kid-friendly event, because I know a lot of people brought their children. And I got feedback from one child who came that said it was boring, because there weren't enough activities for kids, which I'm super excited that we're teaming up with North Andover Reeds and that they seem to be getting involved already. We want to have a Wish Tree of our own at Race Amity Day that hopefully people will contribute to, and then their kids can teach the parents, you know, what they did at school and everything. I'm also really excited, we're going to have a cultural passport, so, kind of like at Epcot, at Disney World, we get the booklet, and then when they go to all the different booths that are going to be there, they can get a stamp or a sticker, haven't quite decided yet, but kind of a fun activity to get everyone engaged in going to all the different activities that we're going to have. There's going to be food, taekwondo, I believe, and then some lion dancers are going to come as well. Is that correct? Is it the lion dancers?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We think we're trying to book them from 12 to 12:30, so we will advertise that because we're hoping the weather's good, because they're big, and they'll be out in the courtyard.
Yeah. We've also reached out to quite a few.
Is the drum circle coming?
Yes, the drum circle. We've reached out to quite a few groups in the Merrimack Valley that have to do with Race Amity, or that, you know, promote a specific culture, and asked, you know, all of them if they want to come, set up a booth. So, we're still working out the details with that, but we're hoping that quite a few outside groups come in to participate as well. And hopefully, we see a lot of people there.
It was great last year.
Yeah. How long have you been planning it?
Um, we put, like, since the conference, like, pretty much, actually, we have a Google Doc from the day after.
After the last one.
The last one, where we put down everything that we, all of our, you know, ideas just from right then. So, I would say since the last one ended.
Wow.
Yeah. We're really excited, really proud of it.
And Principal Jackson has some contacts with some groups that he's connected with in Andover and Lawrence, and we are hoping to invite them to the day event. And I haven't talked to Principal Jackson about this. We talked about it today. We're hoping to also invite them to the World Cafe.
That's great. Yeah.
Just the diversity here in North Andover, that's one of the strengths of this community, I think. Mr. Jackson, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think last year's graduation commencement, you talked about 25, was it 25 graduates?
Twenty-two, twenty-three to the 25.
That were born in different countries across the world, and I think, the other day, talking to Assistant Superintendent Marks and Ms. Kristen Ando, our EL coordinator or heads up for the district, that we have over 34 different languages spoken within the district here in North Andover.
I just want to recognize too, one of our students from the club, Isabel, is the artist here, and I think she does phenomenal work.
Yeah, she's incredible. She drew this by hand, and then we turned it into a picture form. So, this was on all the posters last year.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Thanks for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
And thanks, Ms. Keenan, for all the work you're willing to do for us on the Stevens Memorial Library side, from all the events that you host for us, as well as this partnership.
It's a lot of fun. It's part of the, that's part of the job.
Great. I think it's a really special connection that we have with the library. So, thank you. It's gone a lot further than just walk down and get out a book. And a couple of years ago, you know, and I remember my oldest going and getting his library card and walking down with the class. So, now they're, the engagement is just fantastic.
One of the things that amazes people, we have two meeting rooms, and people try to book them, and someone the other day called to book a room, and we explained that the rooms were being used by the library for the end of May and then into June. Last year, we had 1,200 students from the elementary schools who came either to the library to learn about the summer reading program, or they were visited by a librarian who spoke to an assembly. So, we were looking at the statistics of how many students. We're like, wow, we talked to 1,200, you know, K through five students before the end of the, the school year to talk about, spend your summer with us.
Yeah.
Join us at the library. And many of them did. It's really very, and like you said, rewarding, I think, from both sides. And we hear it from the parents, and we see it from the children who come in and have a nice time at the library and don't want to go home. It's actually amazing.
So, many, aren't you needing to use the high school space to run some of your summer programs now?
We are. So, every year, for six weeks in the summer, we have a special visitor, and we do them at 6:30 at night on Wednesday nights, because we want maybe mom to come out with the children, because dad's home, or maybe dad comes with the children and mom has a break, or everybody comes. And last year, our single biggest night, we had 350 people show up for the Wednesday Night Children's Program. We're really not supposed to have 350 people in the building. So, this summer, we're planning that all of the Wednesday Night Children's Programs will be in the high school and, and in the courtyard if it's nice weather.
Wow.
So, we're actually booking the performers right now. When I came in the next day and they told me 350 people, I was like, oh, the neighbors are going to be calling about the parking any minute. And no one did. It was really extraordinary. It's another part that, it's nice, the neighbors know people are using the building, and they're appreciative of what's happening.
As a neighbor in that area, I can say that I think people have chosen to live there for part of that reason, is the vitality that goes on. Obviously, parking's not great, but, but it's still the fact that it's, it's an active center. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
Okay. Hi, my name's Ava Gilbord. You guys probably remember me. I'm one of the organizers, along with Julie and Lexi, of The Walkout.
Can you just state your address for a minute?
My address?
Do they have to? They're under 18, right? I don't know. They're students.
I can vote if they're all students here.
Yeah, I'm a student, I swear.
No, I mean that. I thought it was.
Yeah, I'm a student.
Student, no. Okay.
Okay. Julie, Lexi, and I attended the coalition meeting today with many different community members, and educationally, I'm glad to say I see change happening already, but I'm still here to talk about the policies and the policy review. From the research I did with the attorney who did it and everything, he doesn't seem as educated as I thought on this topic. The report was choppy and did not say anything helpful, other than what was already occurred in the past. It was in fact right that the no-contact orders were in fact illegal, but the rest seemed contrived to me. It neglected to state five laws that protect girls from sex-based harm, or boys. It neglected general laws, Chapter 12, Section 11, the Massachusetts Civil Rights Act, Massachusetts Declaration of Rights, Article 1, general laws, Chapter 214, Section 102, general laws, Chapter 214, Section 1C, and general laws, Chapter 71, Section 37H, Paragraph 2. Why did it not address the fact that general law, Chapter 71, Section 37H, Paragraph 2, mandates policies to discipline students who violate students' civil rights? Girls' civil rights were violated, but this report does not address whether North Andover High, one, had the right policies in place as mandated by law, and, two, complied with the law when enforcing or not enforcing these policies. The question I leave standing is that equal treatment of girls and boys and sex-based harm on par with race and national origin is mandatory, and the school does not give these people equal treatment. Why are they being subjected to second-class treatment for something that has been done to them? A policy only involving sex slash gender-based harm and something, and the word unwelcomeness, needs to happen immediately. Under no circumstances can it segregate our sex slash gender-based harm. The report was reactive and not proactive, in our opinion.
All right. My name is Julie Sheerhart, and I'm one of the other leaders and organizers of The Walkout. I live at 283 Campbell Road. I just wanted to pose a question real quick, is what if something happens to one of your students today? We did our homework, and we found that general mass law, Title 12, Chapter 71, Section 2C, states that every school must have a policy that addresses teen dating violence and unwelcome sex-based activity. The law states that topics to be covered in the policy include, without limitation to, recognizing warning signs, identifying issues of confidentiality, safety, and appropriate and legal-based, school-based intervention. I did actually print out the whole copy of the Melrose High policy, which I will be talking about. This also includes without restriction. It has come to our atten, um, it has come to our attention that NOS doesn't have an actual policy that addresses these issues. Therefore, with the help of multiple people, people in the NA community, we have started to look into other schools' policies regarding this topic. One of the ones that stood out to us was Melrose's sexual assault policy. This is a 44-page policy which touches upon everything necessary. Melrose High teamed up with Melrose Alliance Against Violence to create this four-part policy. I'm just going to briefly go over each part to summarize it. Part one is the introduction, why this is important in Melrose's specific policy, along with mass law. Part two is intervention, response, and reporting. This addresses the responsibility of the school and the community as a whole, as well as addressing the steps the assistant principal and, and principal must take. This includes responsibility, protocol, and training of staff, as well as responsibility of the peers. Part three is prevention, education, and training. This includes the training protocol for all staff members and educational resources, such as definitions, what to do in the situation, what to do if you're a bystander, parent, friend, teacher, et cetera. Part four is the prevention toolkit, and this is an informational section that provides resources for anyone who is in a situation similar to this. The appendix provides the school's protocol, which accommodates both parties without restricting the survivor's sexual assault. This includes a thorough review of each person's class schedule, lunch schedule, transport to and from school, arrival time, departure time. This is, is, this is to ensure that no survivor of sexual assault has to face their attacker. The Melrose Sexual Assault Policy is very thorough and a very proactive policy. I hope that the North Andover High School will be willing to take a look at it and think about implementing a good chunk of it into our school community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, real quick, these are just the laws that I mentioned in here, and how, and why they should have been a part of this report, so if you guys want to come on to those two. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Jennifer Goldman, 28 Jared Place, North Andover resident. As I always preface my words, these are going to be the toughest I've said yet, so I appreciate you listening through them. You know I respect all of you, okay? This is the second time I am addressing the school committee. The first time was over 1.5 months ago, when a middle school and three high school students came to your meeting and begged for solutions to the vaping crisis with a focus on the bathrooms. Since then, the vaping committee has been formed with no public announcement to parents, no updates provided to the parents, and no research presented on temporary solutions to get us through the rest of the school year. We are an educated community and know that this could be a trend, just as smoking was in our time. And we also know that a long-term solution is a mix of education, enforcement, and other ideas. We also know that schools investing in $750 vaping sensor devices are already experiencing students breaking the devices or buying hands-free vaping items that have vape delivery and smoke removal systems. We also know that you have students walking through the schools with wads of cash as they deal vape for cash. You have students forcing students that can't wait for home to go to the bathroom to vape to get access to the bathroom stalls. You have students with constipation, UTIs, and anxiety due to not being able to go to the bathroom. You have students vaping on the buses where there is recording devices. You have dealers taping kids vaping one time to blackmail them to keep them quiet. And you have teachers desperately trying to educate students and wondering how to enforce. And through all of this, you have, and we're told, of an inexpensive, quick solution that has proven to work. It does not eliminate vaping, but it absolutely reduces it. The youth center in our town has instituted a while ago a bathroom monitoring system outside the bathrooms, managing the number of students going into the bathroom, a system for rotating the staff, and a discipline procedure in place for vapors. What I see, which may or not be true, is a group of school personnel that seem to lack a sense of urgency to reducing the vaping. I see this by the committee just forming, the committee not being asked to present possible solutions in a timely manner, no active discussion of bathroom monitors at some, if not all, bathrooms, and bus video recordings not being reviewed on a consistent basis for instances of vaping. So, I ask you, and I expect no response today, what more do you need to take action? Do you need more kids getting sick? Do you need money to buy desks for bathroom monitors to sit, or to pay teachers and admins to volunteer their time to monitor? As we now know legally, we cannot have parents volunteer. Or do we need a kid to die when their colon perforates from constipation, or when they vape a substance that kills them because they desperately needed to go to the bathroom and access the stalls? I leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hi. My name's Rebecca Healy. I live at 33 Edmonds Road. So, again, I'm, I'm listening, going back to the sexual assault issue. I'm listening to everything. I am a teacher, not in North Andover. I work in the school, so I just, I see all of this, and I kind of have a sense of how things play out in practicality. So, in listening to it, I really, I have nagging concerns. I guess my first one is that we have a boy, now a man, right, he's over 18, who had multiple accusers, very serious allegations against him, and someone deemed it fit to put his survivors and this now man on a safety plan. Like, someone made this decision. Just rhetorical question, obviously, but whose idea was this? Right? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, somebody chose, somebody thought that this was appropriate, and that, to me, is a failure of judgment to a pretty serious degree. I have a very direct way of speaking. You love that about, that me, or you hate that about me, but, you know, I'm just, these are the concerns, and I am probably not the only one just having this concern in my mind, which is why I say it. I'm also feeling a little bit of cognitive disconnect. I know vaping's very serious, but we're raising the consequences for vaping, but at the same time, like, we have an apparent rapist, right? And we want to raise consequences for that. Again, I hope I'm making sense. We know that early intervention is key in all behavioral issues, right? So, this boy had these behavioral issues. Melrose has a wonderful, I assume, I haven't looked at it, but it sounds wonderful, 44-page document. That sounds great. But 44 pages, it's not going to do anything if it's not played out correctly in actual practice. And again, I think we should implement it. Like, that's not what I'm saying, but it has to be implemented correctly, and it has to be followed through, and it has to be transparent. Again, I hope I'm making sense here. So, otherwise, we're kind of adding meaningless bureaucracy if people don't adhere to it. Again, these are just things that I've seen and just nagging concerns that I have. The biggest thing that's on my mind is, what's the chain of command? If I'm a teacher, if I'm a student, if I'm a parent, and if I raise a behavioral concern The biggest thing that's on my mind is, what's the chain of command? If I'm a teacher, if I'm a student, if I'm a parent, and if I raise a behavioral concern about someone, if somebody is violating a student in my class, if I'm a student, if I'm a parent, what is the chain of command? I think that should be really transparent. If somebody is complaining about a sexual assault, to the teacher, for instance, naturally, that would be above the teacher's chain of command, so he or she would report to his or her supervisor. Okay. So then, if the parents ask, like, what happened with this? Oh, I reported it to so-and-so. Who does that person follow through with? How do you appeal this, if you're upset about the finding, and so forth? I think that this can be a way to just make sure that we don't kind of, you always get to a point where you look back, and it's like, oh, no, like, we should have done more, right? Like, if only we had done X, Y, and Z, like, this wouldn't have happened. Sometimes, unfortunately, it takes a really catastrophic event to enact change. So early intervention can prevent that, but I find that it's rarely done in actual practice. All the research supports it, but it's tough to do. So these are just things that, that I hope occur. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none. Does the committee have, oh, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Michelle Crowe. I'm the mom of one of the victims. And I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I literally just read the report that came out on the independent review, and I'm sick to my stomach, because my kid's the first one that's talked about in that report. And you based it, it was based on a criminal standard, and this was not a criminal standard. It already went there. All I'm saying is that despite everything that I sent in about my daughter being harassed by coaches, by parents, by the family, it was ignored, despite my pleas of saying, we want an independent investigator to investigate this, because the vice principals have a stake in this. This is the school. What is independent about that? So I just want everyone to know that all of these investigations of Title IX that went before your vice principals were complete bullshit. I also want to know, how can an athlete get thrown off a sports team or have to miss games or meets for swearing or drinking, but not for a sexual assault? And how many people does it take to report in a row within a year? Three different girls within a year, one who reported to the school while she was, while this boy was still under investigation by the DA for raping my daughter? Why was he able to continue with sports? I don't understand this. You guys can talk all you want, but we're talking about children, girls, young lives. He's an athlete, great. He's a great athlete, even better, great for the school. But these girls were told, do not speak about any of these issues. Why? They have a voice. Why are they being suppressed? I don't understand what just happened here, or what you guys are talking about, but it's insanity. And I can't even tell you how grateful I am that I moved out of North Andover and got my kid out of the school, because it's crazy what has just happened here.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Does the committee have any final comments? Ms. Picard?
Final comments?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn to the next meeting on May 9th, 2019.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Mably.
Aye.
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 And aye.